Welcome you all to the July 22nd, 2025 Rochester County Council Meeting. Somebody tell me how we're already almost through July. If everyone had a chance to look at the minutes in the previous meetings and the meeting. Move in second and all in favor say aye. Beth, do you have any communications?
Yes, I do actually. I just wanted to tell you that, excuse me, there was a notice sent to the city council here with me for the notice of Department of Redevelopment public meeting on August 20th. So maybe we want it Wednesday at 8:30 a.m. And it's been published in the paper already, but I just wanted to read that too.
You didn't catch it since August 20th? It's agreed though?
Yes.
Yeah.
But it's sent to all the overlapping task districts. So there are like eight letters sent out, all county authority, air corps authority, the schools, the library, everybody got one. We got one.
Anything else? Okay. I don't have any old business on the agenda, so start with new business. Jody?
Where do you want me to be at?
Probably just go up here somewhere.
Yeah, up here.
Do you need a voting?
No, I'm okay. If I stand, I can see you. You're good here?
You're good.
Oh, wonderful. Okay. Good afternoon, for those of you who don't know me, you probably do. I'm Jody Wynn. I am the president of the Polk County Animal Adoption Education Center Board. Our executive director Jackie is dealing with a family issue right now, can't be here, but she would be happy to come. She wants to meet up with you, but she needs to be. So if you remember, I was here in January or February, I don't remember which, and we kind of talked about the year end, and you asked me to come back and kind of give an update. Do you have a packet that I think you need put with all of you? I am not going to read this word for word for you, but it has our logo at the top of it. I'm just giving you a little background of things. Some of the different things that we have gone ahead and done since we've spoken earlier this year is continue to be more cognizant of what our members and things are looking like. So if we start kind of looking at the top, we have to remember that animal welfare is a daily commitment. You can't leave those animals for the weekend or because it's Christmas, because it's Fourth of July, they still need food and water and let out. So we have staff there, 360 employees this year. So we employ four full-time employees and four part-time employees from the county and the city to care for those, plus a whole lot of volunteers. We're talking about what it costs to take care of the animals. So this chart here shows you what at minimum it costs when an animal enters our facility. An animal can enter our facility in three different ways, through animal control, through owner surrender, or straight from the public. Every animal, depending on what we know about them, we give these vaccines and we spay and neuter every animal before it leaves our facility. If they're animal controlled or straight from public, we don't know much about them, so we probably have to do all of them. If they're owner surrender, sometimes we can get some vaccine history on them. We just, we never know, you know, what the owner's going to tell us and what tells us. We found that animals spend up 15 to 30 days on average at the center, and every day that they're there, it costs between $15 and $25, depending on the type inside the animal. Those basically, you cannot include vaccines, but it's food and water and employees' time and overhead for the facility. So that's not a significant amount of time that we spend there. We like to move those animals as quickly as we can, but you know, sometimes they take a little more time in the family than they need to be. We only accept animals into our facility from outside the county, but we will adopt to anyone outside the county who, or inside the county who would like to take an animal. We're happy to do that. We have a couple of charts that you're going to see at the back of there, and you do sometimes see some like, some that are brought in when it's possible and when you maybe think an animal is adoptable or a really good fit, we may pull from another shelter if we have the capacity and they will need to do so. It's not been happening for adopted. I won't talk to all these charts, but you can look at it in the back. There's three pages or four pages there. So we've got four different, three different charts that are showing each month where the animals come from, straight by public, animal control, and owner surrender. And we look at them, she's got them, Jackie pulled all this together. This is for the first time here, we can see that we get a lot, obviously, from within the Rochester city and county. And what she, where she says Rochester County, that's meaning not inside city limits, but still at the Rochester, probably Rochester County. The very, what I find really interesting, so much you guys look at this, you don't need to go over all, but the very last page is showing all intakes. This is all animals that entered our shelter from January to June 2025. And we can see that 163 of those animals and 37% of them have come from inside the city limits, and another 36% or 160 animals have come from the Rochester township outside of city limits area. Akron's our next biggest one. And that's when you see that small out of county, you probably take in 21 animals in or something like that. Which I don't think is, I think we expected to see those numbers because Rochester probably takes the most advantage of our animal center. We are so blessed with our animal center. I was doing some calculations just for you, and if we base it on that last graph, if we take $120 a day plus 20 times 20 days that an animal spent with us, that's $65,000 we've spent on Rochester city limit animals this year.
Rochester city limit or Rochester?
Rochester city limit. Nope, just city because I took 20 times 20 times 163. And that's just half of the year. In addition to a lot of the things we've done there on the second page, we're still committed to keeping Polk County and Rochester residents, their animals in safe, loving homes. We want the animals to stay with their people if they can. So what we've done is we have 366 cats, spay and muters so far this year. We've had 673 animals visit our vaccine clinic. We, during the cold months, we coordinated supplies and food for any person wanting to use our warming center that had an animal. It is a fact that, you know, we have people that need the warming center, but they, we had people that did not want to enter it because their animal could not be cared for there. And so we were at capacity, but we were able to give anything and they needed for that. We run a pet food supply pantry as we have ability to do that. We educate events through social media and animal welfare, and we're always willing to speak at any public event on public awareness of our services because there's a lot of great services. We are so fortunate to have all the services we have. There are many counties surrounding us that do not have the ability to have an animal shelter, plus a vaccine clinic, plus a spay and neuter clinic that's providing lots of things to our animals. And we do that at low cost. You know, if you're low income, we will provide even a further reduced piece of that services. If we weren't here, thinking a lot about that, we don't want to ever think that, but if we're not here, I've got a list there at the bottom of things that happen, overpopulation. Years ago, before I started with the animal center, about probably 2011 timeframe, there was a lot of cat colonies and a lot of cats roaming the streets. And we've been able, through grants and other options, in our spec, in our spaying and clinic, to really help with the overpopulation. A cat can have two litters at minimum a year with six cats, and all those, and it just compounds and compounds so quickly. And so we've been able to do a lot of attracting release, and you think you see a difference. I've not seen as many strangles. There are animals still, they're dumping around, so it's a long process, it doesn't happen often. But we have been working hard on that. Trying to kill the overpopulation comes accidents. You know, you've got animals and hitting cars and people and bikes and things that would take law enforcement, that would have to go and, you know, look through that. Disease can be transmitted, you know, animals that are not cared for can carry these and can be, they invite people, and we're certainly helpful at that. And we also provide a lack of, there'd be a lack of education resources. Anybody who calls, comes in, messages us, we can find almost any resource for them, particularly for the animal, and we really want to. That's those people that work at the animal center, day in and day out, they have such a passion for it and want to make sure that all those animals are cared for. We're very fortunate to have the support that we have through the county and city and our citizens. We have 20,000 Facebook followers, and that's a big number for a nonprofit and the town leaders, and that we're able to advocate and educate and promote animal welfare to our community. Like I said, it's just unique, we're going to have what we have, and we are looked at as an example, and we'll continue to be that example for the surrounding communities. So I guess with that, Jeremy headed?
Yeah, I've been really impressed with Jackie. I think the whole staff is really great, but Jackie did a great job of taking the request and doing more. I saw the first position of this, and then just came back, I thought, awesome, my teeth, because it was better than I even thought it was going to be. And it's a great picture.
She did a good job.
Yeah, she did a great job. It's a great picture to help us to understand what's being done and what we need to ask for. What was, grateful to her.
The next thing is have one question, so I thought it would be difficult, but when I look at this middle, this second page, when you talk about the combined 73% of all intakes from Rochester, 73% is from all Rochester township?
Yes.
Because there's only 36% coming from the city.
Correct.
Okay.
That kind of, it shows that a little bit more on the graph.
Is that 65,000 of 73%, or is that 65,000 of?
Of the 37. It's 20 times 20.
The 36% or 37%?
It's 163, so I took 20 times 20 times 163.
Got you.
And as a banker, I think I did my math right. We hope.
You probably.
I didn't check with my mathematician, but I think we're okay.
Did she do her math good?
She's good.
No, I took strictly city limits on there.
Okay, got you.
Showing the whole picture though.
Well, I mean, I've observed, how much money have you raised this year? Because it seemed like this last 12 months, you guys have had a lot more fundraisers and things going on to raise funds.
I don't, I only have three genres of fundraisers left in my head.
If I remember the numbers from the year before, your overall budget was like $285.
Our budget's a little bit higher than that now because of the vaccine and spay and neuter clinic, because that.
That's picked up speed.
That has picked up a lot of speed because as Jeanette is no longer our executive director, she does do the community outreach and the spay and neuter vaccine clinic, so she's been able to promote that a lot more. And so we have seen a lot more, so costs of medication goes up, and so our budget, you know, is different, but we do reduce some of that cost. So in donations, just actually year to date, we've had about 63,000 donations. Fundraisers are just about five right now. Our bigger fundraiser is getting ready to happen. We have a rummage sale in August, and that's where we make a bulk of our funds. So we certainly are trying every fundraiser, anything that we can do to continue to supplement that, but you know, the money that we get from, you guys kind of gave us that date layer to care for some animals and then, because you never know what donations and fundraisers will bring in, they're up and down. But the rummage sale is surprisingly our biggest one. It's a lot of work too. If anyone wants to help, he and you can just sign that.
Thanks, so this report is very informative.
Absolutely. And we'll make a time, we'll work with you, you need to get Jackie here so that she can meet all of you.
I gotta ask though, I mean, I did see Akron carved out a pie, and I know they haven't been funding.
We tried, and we're continuing to try.
Do we need to make some phone calls?
Yes.
Okay.
Call for background.
I've talked to her.
Yes, absolutely. Any help that we can get with those communities, you know, in proportion to it. We now have some really good data that we haven't had before.
Right.
To kind of talk to the other, the surrounding counties, the other communities in the county. We haven't had that before.
I think some of it is hard though, too, because.
But we're, all we can do is strive to be better than we were. I think that from six months ago, we've got a lot more data and we can continue to be better.
I don't know.
Right, is that it?
I know she got Monterey, Monterey's actually a place I can't.
I think there might be, is there something maybe?
I would say the long wire.
It could, yeah, she could have kind of come by it a little bit differently. But absolutely, we can take a closer look. Sometimes those get really confusing when a person tells us, because we're going by what we're told, so.
See, thank you so much.
All right, thank you guys.
Before we go on, I forgot to read this thing, the communications, our last recipient of mayor's essay grant, David Thomas, and she sent this like right after our last meeting. I didn't get a chance to read it for everyone. So it says, "Thank you so much for choosing my essay to be in the top three of the mayor's award contest. I'm proud to represent Rochester. Sincerely, David Thomas." Okay, moving on. Andy and Beth, you have to guide me through this a little bit. I'm not sure exactly whether this is more informative. I know we had an important meeting a couple of weeks ago with this Maple Crest development. Most of the decision making is on the RDC or the EDC. The one thing we have to do, Kim will do this, item three, is appoint a member to sit on this EDC. Don't ask me to explain the difference, I'm not sure the government even knows what the difference is honestly, but we have to do this Economic Development Commission, it's different than the Rochester Redevelopment Commission, correct? Am I accurate so far? So, and it's basically to approve a bond, not our bond, but a kind of?
Contractor bond.
A what? Contractor bond, okay. So anyway.
Is it temporary thing?
No, it's.
No, it's, we established it what, in 1979 I think, but we've never had anybody on it.
But Adam, how long do these members serve? Is it annual?
I think it's annual.
Can you get to reappoint them?
Yeah, I think it's annual.
Yeah, you said annual.
It's an annual thing, so it will serve out the rest of this calendar year, and then they would either be reappointed or appoint a new one?
Yeah.
I, just for background, I think the, I think the purpose of the EDC, pretty much why, sorry, it's used in different districts. I mean, I think this was, I think of it as a more generic committee to comment, prove, and encourage economic development in the city, and it still has a role in some things as the bond council informed us they have to be involved in improving, something like that.
So we're back up to item two. Many of you were in attendance and have checked out the Maple, well, what we're calling, the developer is calling the Maple Crest Development out on Apache Drive, which will be 184 units of multiple type housing, either apartments, townhouses, condos, senior living condos, I mean, single living homes. There also will be a community center, and it is a members-only community center. They do rent it out, but generally it's for the community, that community, and a pool, you know, the one-off, but off the top of my head. But several of us went and visited that complex in Plymouth, were very impressed. It's a very attractive development, maintained by the developer. The ownership is only for the, like, the single living homes, it's for the home, not the land it sits on, so you have an HOA to pay for the maintenance, which is very reasonably priced. Anyway, I think as we gained information over the last two to three weeks, it became obvious to us that this is something our community desperately needs. They do, it is market rate. Again, it is vertically integrated, a developer who owns their own lumberyard, their own hardware store, their own excavating team, and they can build things a lot cheaper than other market rate developers can do because of all that. The one thing, a couple of things that jumped out, the positives to us is, first of all, they're not asking for any money out of our hands, which is good because they've already put a bunch of money out there. The other thing that jumped out was the fact that we put a bunch of money out there and developed the road, not necessarily as a positive. We think it is, we want to say, well, we put three, four bays out there, but they see it as well. Now we've got to come in and retrofit or fit our complex into what, around these roads. We've got to do a bunch of curb cuts, we've got to do a bunch of boring, we've got to do a lot of extra work because it's there. We'd have been better off having not done anything out there and let them come in on a blank canvas and put the roads in the way they wanted to, as they needed and as they were building. So that was kind of eye-opening to me, but it certainly made sense. So those two factors were pretty, pretty large. The economic impact it would have on the community, certainly when we look at our utilities, talking about $7 million roughly to our water service over the next 20 years and some other minor, minor benefits. Some of the unknowns is your kind of guess to make. They say typically on these developments, you have about 50% of the inhabitants coming from out of the county into your county, which means more lid taxes, means more students to the school. That all answers the question I had for the school and the hospital last year when we sat with them, Mikey, Charlie, and I met with both, and asked the same question, what can we do for you? Help our population, build our population to help us, help the hospital. Newsweek, if you're not familiar, had an article in April that lists in 10 counties that have lost the greatest percentage of population over the last, this was early '23 to mid-'24. And guess what? Fulton County was one of those counties. We're the only county in the whole Midwest that was mentioned in that article, the rest are deep south and far west. So losing population is not good for anybody, not good for our businesses, not good for our income from a government standpoint, lid tax and so forth. So the opportunity to fill the void, and that void was shown in our Halle study, that we needed 600 units of housing in Fulton County over the next five years, and now with our two apartment complexes and this development, we're 260 in. So that's a, that's a huge thing. So I'm very excited about it. It's taken a lot of time to work with them and come to this point in time. So is there any vote needed on this? Is this all pretty much EDC-RDC stuff from this point forward? The only thing we need on this EDC is an appointment from this council for someone to sit on that Economic Development Commission, which won't be a big, very much time, we just, I think we have.
Basically just to vote and ask for the bond for the building.
And this meeting will occur right after the 8:30 meeting, especially called meeting on August 20th, so roughly thereafter, we'll have that EDC vote. So I need somebody that would be willing to, and really this is not my decision, it's your decision, of someone who wants to sit on that EDC. Does someone volunteer, Brian?
I'm happy if Brian's not, I think Brian doesn't want to.
The reason I'm asking Brian partly is I think there needs to be somebody from the Fedco, but you're still on the Fedco board, right?
Yeah.
I just, I feel like they ought to be represented, it's the only reason, I would suggest him, but if you, if somebody else really wants to do it, I'm sure Brian would be. So it's just one meeting?
Yeah.
One meeting a week. And then we have to have somebody from the county council at their next meeting, I talked to Ron about it. I wasn't real clear on exactly how all this works, it's kind of a simple thing, I sent you a bunch of information, and I think the next county council, it's the night before we have the ZDC meeting, they'll need to, when somebody lets them know, by the way, you've got to be there in the morning. So if, I'll probably, I'll be talking to him again to make sure he's more clear. So does anybody have any questions about anything? Okay, so.
He doesn't have a vote.
Yeah, so can we have someone make?
I'll make a motion that Brian represents us.
I'll second.
Move in second and all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, thank you. It went for the, for the, I think.
There'll be a vote, too, but we haven't gotten it, it's been scottled.
Yeah, we'll figure it out, it's not what you call it prior to that meeting. Yeah. Crown.
It's real gold.
Okay, this could default, thank you for communication, right?
Yeah, I know, I know, sorry.
All right. Next item of business, and Beth, you can help me with this as well. We stumbled sort of across a fund that we had to ask some questions about and kind of nail down as to what it was, where it came from. There was an old grant, you explain it.
It was an old housing grant from 1993 that we gave out loans to residents that were doing some remodeling, like, you know, windows and doors and that kind of stuff. Excuse me. And there's been no activity in it for the 12 years that we've had recently, which is our county system, and it just, this number just came in. So we've got about $143,000 in cash in there. So I did some research, and because it was actually used for housing way back then, we feel like it could be used for housing again, so we thought it'd be a good place to put it with these stimulus grants to do remodeling in the downtown apartments. So, and I checked with the IFA, had no response back on, I don't think anybody was alive when this was done, it's down there really, nobody knows where, what it was or where it came from. So I think we should take advantage of it.
And this is 145,000?
Forty-three or something.
So once, once that money's spent, then it'll be, it'll be gone.
Yeah, so what, what we were thinking, and it's kind of tied a little bit to black removal as well, in my opinion. I know we've got a lot of apartments, and I'm going to ask you to speak to that in a minute, Eric, in the downtown partnership map about businesses that, and economic development wise, the heart of growth comes from your heart of the city, of the community, and that is the heart of the city. So we're doing a lot of things, usually is doing a lot of things to get a lot more activity downtown, to help our downtown businesses. And if you look at other communities, the more vibrant the downtown is, more activity, the more people you got living there, the more people that can walk and not drive to all these things that we have downtown, the better the businesses do, the better. You saw that just, what, Saturday?
Yeah.
You know, the, it just, it just takes off from there. So Harry, can you speak approximately, maybe how many apartments are there that presently they're stagnant, that can be revitalized with the grant appropriate?
Yeah, about 50% of downtown apartments are vacant. I think that number was around 80 total. I don't have a specific number, but it was, I know it was a 50% occupancy for livable spaces. When we did some surveying of what buildings had in them, that number's not a hard fast number, but probably for several years, we've had a awning, or an awning and facade program downtown Rochester for about 10 years now, it's been funded with grants over the years. Of that program, we've done things like help building owners get awnings and do windows and facades. It also helps stimulate the MSRP program, but that money was received is around $70,000, and it's stimulated $850,000 in projects when you count MSRP. So it leveraged some pretty good, some wins for downtown. And we've often thought it'd be nice to do something similar to stimulate the apartments. There's a, when you have a building that was built anywhere from 1880 to 1910 in this historic district, a lot of these buildings have some serious issues in trying to make those livable spaces again. You know, in the 40s and 50s, they brought the ceilings down, they may have upgraded the electrical back then. These buildings were built before the days of electric steam, so you know, they had central boiler systems and, that were converted to heating systems. But anyway, it's, there are some challenges, but the windows are very expensive, you know, a window for a downtown apartment's about $4,000 to $5,000, so, because they're AP tall. So anyway, a stimulus program that would take some of these apartments and get them turned into livable space is what we've kind of put together. And kind of our, this is just a suggestion of taking dollars if they were available and do like a 25% stimulus match, so the grant would pay 25% of the project and the building owner would pay approximately $75. We put a cap per project, per building at $12,500 per year, so if the building owner, if there's still flats available in the second year, the building owner could probably reapply if they were still doing other apartments. And to see what would happen, we don't really know how much that would help, but a typical apartment could easily cost $50,000 to put new HVAC in it, put new electrical system in it, probably have to redo the plumbing, and, and those, I mean, they've got good bones in most cases, but they're unused space. And if we could get these apartments, back in the days in the 50s, you know, the rents were $85 a week, or by the month, you know? These apartments could easily draw, if they were renovated, $1,200 rents. It could bring more businesses, more people living downtown, it's going to be better for the restaurants, it might be appealing for young professionals. So that's what we're trying to get more Brian Fitzwaters living downtown, that kind of thing. But it does have some, some nice appeal. There are projects that have been worked on, they're really, they're pretty cool. Dr. Hoff has invested a lot in his building, and he's doing two floors of apartments. And that, I was approached today by the hospital, they're looking, they're getting ready to start a residency program in a couple of years out, but they're going to be looking for apartments for like two years for physicians coming in and doing education, and that downtown professional apartment would be perfect. That's obviously the kind of client we'd love to see living downtown. That's obviously the kind of client we'd love to see living downtown. So anyway, I think there's plenty of potential, and it kind of goes right along with our mission. We would-- this would be managed by the EV committee of RDP, somewhat the way we do the awning grants. The building owner would have to apply, do the work, pay for the work, and then get the stimulus.
This would be projects that would be not-- nothing retroactive.
Nothing retroactive. Dan, appreciate any comments you guys have about it. But it could have helped with electrical, HVAC, plumbing improvements, kitchen and bathroom fixtures, general construction related to the project. Obviously, they'd have to get an approved building permit, anticipated construction and cost estimates, and define the scope of work. And it would have to be residential use of the second and third floors.
I have one question. When I was looking at this, you have one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom. Now, like above my bar, I'm putting a lot, no bedrooms.
Well--
So that's not going to--
I mean--
Because it's small.
It's going to have a bed, isn't it? Somebody's always living there.
Yeah, but it's so small that putting the bed in and the plumbing issues of putting the bed in-- you know, because the plumbing was all redone when I did the bond. So there wasn't-- and then, you know-- had Dwight been here, it'd probably be a little different.
Yeah. As long as it's space for somebody who's living.
Uh-huh, yeah.
Not just fixing it up.
Right, yeah.
So $12,000-- I'm just asking, where did the $12,500 per unit come from?
We just stabbed that $25,000, $50,000 project. This would be 25%.
Yes, I was looking at it, and I was thinking, so $50,000, you know, ish. That-- if the capacity to be able to do one of these things-- I don't know, for downtown, you were just talking about the cost being larger.
If the cost is $100,000, they'd only get $12,500. They're going to get maximum of $12,500. If the project is $20,000 upgrade, they just need to redo their electrical, for instance.
Yeah, so it's not like a true 25, 75. It would be just the $12,500 per unit.
Mass, $12,500 mass.
It'll be 25% of two--
Yeah.
Okay.
Not to exceed 25% or $12,500. But I think that's pretty significant to get stimulus.
Well, that's pretty good, because then it's not given out to just one person.
Yeah.
Yeah, we take this money and spread it around. And, you know, not every building's going to get renovated, but, you know, I think we could see several projects stimulated on this.
Sure you can. I mean, how many apartments now have older ones and they're usable now? And then it leaves out, well, hey, now I can raise this ceiling and get--
The grants are only going to be eligible for space that is currently not on.
Okay, okay.
If they have a current use of that-- if somebody's already living there, it's not a remodel.
Okay.
Just to stimulate new--
New, new--
New residential places.
But $12,500, depending upon the 148, could do 11.2. October, new.
Yeah.
If they max it out.
If they max it out, yeah.
Yeah.
Then we just come back, ask for more.
Which we talked about that, and do-- and we knew that wouldn't be-- not everybody would max it out. That's where we felt like we could probably hit 20 or 25 apartments, maybe depending, you know, how much--
Yeah, well, there are awning grants, facade grants. You know, few people max out what we offer. Right now, we offer $5,000 on a $15,000 project, a facade, and a one-third price for an awning up to $3,000. You know, so they get $1,000 for an awning on a $3,000 project. So it's-- they could get it done for that or less, usually get some improvements made.
I think it's great. What do we need to do?
Yeah.
I don't.
Can you vote?
Well, I mean-- I got a really quick thing--
Okay, sure.
--for you. I'll take this further. I got a text from Brett this afternoon in Kurnut. He says buddies in Tipton are acquiring historic buildings and are getting a landmark-- Indian landmark grant. They just got one for $325,000.
Wow.
Tipton's smaller than New York. So what is being done? I mean, is that something-- where do those funds come from? I mean, I thought everything was empty.
First I heard about it.
Well, you might call Brett and ask him more about it. He might-- he'll tend to get some information on that, but, yeah, I just received a $325,000 grant from Indian Landmarks. So I look into it, see what might be available.
Yeah. I think they get their money federally, so maybe it's, you know, state dollars for the OCR funds for historic preservation have dried up this year. Nothing was funded for this year, but it might be back next year.
Didn't say whether that was state or federal, but--
But I think Indian landmarks is funded federally. Our guidelines are all-- work was done by them, so certainly follow their-- it's already registered in certain areas. Dan, thank you.
So does anybody have-- Terry put this together. I mean, I threw some ideas in there, and then he ran with it. Does anybody have any tweaking to this thing, or what's your general thoughts?
I just had a question, Beth. Do we need to wait to hear back from your people before we go forward?
No.
Okay.
I did more research, and they said-- they're screaming, saying, "What if they never get back with you?" I said, "Go ahead and do it."
Okay.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that.
No, I know.
I don't want to have to come back--
I did the same thing.
--to meetings and change this, change that.
You know. It's-- I've reached out a couple of times, actually, so--
So that deadline's December 31st, 2026.
But that's why I felt comfortable, like, because it's the same--
This is actually going to be completed. Yeah, that's just kind of--
And then we'll see where--
We don't know if this is going to be perpetually available, but we want to put some kind of--
So then, from the point of approval, then that's one application, or whatever, you can get that where it needs to be, then that would start?
Yeah, they would-- they would get estimates done and start the project. They paid for the project before we give them their funds. It's not like we give them dollars, go do something. We don't want to have half-done jobs.
So then they would just complete it by 2026, and then you would reimburse them for everything?
Just like I said--
So I think what we need from this board--
Well, I'm just trying to-- because I think you hit a key thing. You know, I mean, you actually want a finished apartment at the end of that. You want to-- the goal is to get living space. I don't know, maybe this doesn't have-- it seems like the finish point, because, I mean, that-- some of the buildings got huge spaces up here. If you could bring one-- get one apartment and got it to close, and that would seem like qualified. It might be a bunch of areas of availability.
A typical 20-foot space has two apartments. You know, these buildings are all 20-foot buildings. They'll have a front, back apartment, if they had apartments. You know, they have to have a front and back ingress, so that kind of limits some of the buildings, but--
What if they wanted to do-- the buildings kind of got apartments now, but they needed to upgrade the whole electrical system in the building to disqualify for that? Or how would you treat that? Okay. I just--
Maybe it's time to get a bed.
Well, so is your point being-- Ryan, is your point being that you would want it to be-- that the whole apartments accomplish?
Well, I mean, I think-- I think you could probably get-- Yeah, I'd like to see, going back to having something finished at the end, seems important.
Versus like, just like one big apartment.
We could define that to where, when they're completed with a project, it's going to be livable. I mean, they don't necessarily have to do everything, but they're-- maybe the limitation is just electrical, maybe it's just plumbing, maybe it's everything. You know, you get tearing into these things.
Yeah. But it's nice to get to a finish. But you also kind of alluded to something, too, that I think's important, that it's-- there is a point of no return on some of these things, and if there's demolition involved, I'm not opposed-- if that makes the area better, I'm not opposed to that either. Again, I don't know what the criteria, because sometimes it's just a whole lot easier to start over.
I mean, like, I lived in your apartment, right? And so it-- I mean, it wasn't perfect, but it was--
But the landlord was--
The landlord was perfect.
Well, since then, we've read that--
Yeah, that's the thing.
We've read that, and like, oh, I put central air.
So that, like-- looking at that, it wasn't like an overwhelming task to make that happen. And I lived in it, it was livable.
The biggest challenge is the bomb.
Yeah.
Because it's all old cast iron pipe, and it hasn't been used, you know, sometimes 20 or 30 years, and these cast iron pipes rust on the top. So everything seems fine until you start running water down it. And then, you know, you-- so you've got to definitely test-- my own experience is, test that little day pipe out before you even go anywhere, because if you don't run out of much water down it, you might get for a surprise.
Should we add proof of occupancy? I mean, I'm thinking, if I'm a business owner, and I got three spaces up there, but I run out of money after one, well, that's partly my problem for not spreading my dollars further. But I can get one in there.
Maybe not occupancy, but at least livable. You know, it's ready--
Your decision.
It's ready to be--
You can't put somebody in there without an inspection.
Yeah.
So it's all inspection, okay?
Yeah.
Okay. But you're right. You could-- if you wanted to get three apartments, you could quickly spend $50,000 to $70,000 bucks and still not have probably a livable space in at least one spot. So I think it's important to get livable.
To make it-- that the money spent is making it livable.
My prediction is that if you stimulate one, and they start getting that $12,000 a year rent, they might say, okay, I can now invest this in the back.
Well, that's the other side of it, too. If you're going to spend $50,000 and get-- even if you only get $12,000 back, you spent $37,500 that you want to return, so you are going to make sure you get-- that you save rent back.
Yeah, Frank should be able to pay for everything in three to five years, right? So it should be--
If it all works, it's better than what I'll pay you on a savings account.
Okay.
It's got to all work.
So the caveat being that it's working for--
At least one. At least one.
What the project--
Well, yeah, but what we were talking about is more than one apartment.
We've got more cups of water on that.
Yeah. Yeah, because--
Verified livable space.
Right, because like, if I was to put-- if I had a large enough space to put three apartments or even two, I can get one started, use that money to get to finish and get that one. And there is stuff that you're going to do for both of them, because you-- at that time. So you do have extra money going out, because you know you're going to put another one in. Okay? But getting that one livable is the key. It's the key. That one livable one is the key, so that you move on to the next livable one.
And if there's still dollars available, they could apply again the next year, right?
Yeah.
I just wanted to tell you, it's just this finite fund. We don't get additional funds in, so--
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Knowing who has the houses, the places downtown and that, you know, there's a limited number of people that are interested anyway.
Well, it's like the MSRP grant. Only a limited amount of people took advantage of that, but it did good for the buildings that did take advantage of that, so-- so it's more to that.
Well, there's a lot of space on 8th Street that could be livable with some-- one of our downtown plans has the 8th Street properties from the Sentinel to Putts. All those upstairs are similar. And if you did-- one of the big things is elevator. You know, some people want an elevator access to get elderly seniors in them. Well, cost for an elevator, two apartments, is prohibited. But if with that space, the building owners or the city planner said, run a walkway across the backside of the building and provide an elevator that feeds that walkway, and then you could have elevator access for the entire block on a keypad or something that they could punch in. It'd be right off the city lot, so there'd be plenty of parking, off-street parking. Behind the buildings there is actually about 20 feet of the building owners own before the city lot starts. So it would be a perfect place for, you know, maybe 12 apartments. But it takes a lot of cooperation between all these building owners to pull something off like that. But it's a dream.
I mean, I'm recommending we do this, pending-- I mean, with the addition that it's-- you know, something added in here that is livable at the end.
What I really need is to have the board say that they're approving use of the funds for that.
I'm in condition that we use the funds for this. For the caveat that we need to add.
For a living.
For a living. Moving second, Amy moved. Moving second, and all in favor, raise your right hand.
Thank you.
You're done?
Thank you.
Okay. Last item, new business. You know, pop up, resolution 16-2025. Someone explain that, Beth?
Yeah, these are also related to that 1993 grant. They don't-- the other one has actual physical cash in the bank's bank account. These just have-- they say we have cash, but they really don't. So we can take the dormant funds and close them and put the money in rainy day fund. So that's what this resolution does, is it takes the two other Indian Financing Authority-- did you guys not have this in there?
It's right here.
One page?
We got the dormant.
Yes. So, yeah. So I want to transfer both those dollar amounts, going from $12,879, $25,000. The other's $28,277, and put that in rainy day fund.
But those aren't real dollars?
Well, they actually are. They're just-- they're an allocation of general fund.
Okay, all right.
It's just they aren't tied to it specifically. They're tied to the general bank account, but this-- the other one has its own bank account.
We need to read this resolution just by title only, or we need to--
We don't have to do it that way.
You never have to read a resolution in its entirety.
So this is separate than the 140, whatever that amount is? This is addition-- this is-- is that other money from the Indian Housing Financial? This is completely different?
No, they're both from the-- they're all three from Indian Financing. So $145,000 is its own bank account--
Okay.
--with actual funds in it. This is an allocation of our general fund into these two accounts that--
Are unnecessary.
--have had no activity, really, seriously, for over 15 years.
Okay.
So if we can put it and allocate it to the rainy day fund out of the general fund, that'll be good, since we use the rainy day fund.
Okay. So I need a motion to approve resolution 16-2025, a resolution to transfer dormant fund balance and dissolve dormant fund. We should probably read it. We need to read it first, Brian. So we-- That's the only thing we need to--
No, it's not an ordinance.
Yeah, make that motion.
Just ask for a vote.
Been a move of Brian. Amy seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any other new business?
Good job.
Chief, the boys is not here, Chief shots.
Uh, good evening, for the month of June, you've got my report, you can see the numbers, you've got 888 incidents per month, 24 people lodged, 99 offenses, 251 warnings, and then you have crimes that people were lodged for on the back page. Other than that, um, we did make a conditional offer to max local for, for, to fill our police officer's position. If you remember, Ed Haynes retired, we're still trying to replace him. We had a Board of Works interviews, we made a conditional offer, he went to Indianapolis Friday for testing, um, we've gotta wait for results, we should have it back in 10 to 12 days. We're hoping to get him started, as long as he passes everything, probably the first part of September. Fingers crossed that everything goes okay. Well, other than that, um, police in the park, we've got that coming up, August 2nd, Saturday, August 2nd, 4 to 6. So, um, we're again partnering with Mill Creek to provide food, hot dogs for freshmen's, and a couple other local entities that are gonna be there. I don't really have anything else, unless you have questions.
I have a question.
Hey, Andy, what time is that?
4:00 to 6:00 P.M.
Okay, uh, I'll just say something briefly about stormwater, Randy had shoulder surgery yesterday, so he's down for a little while, it went better than he expected, he may be out of the sling, he told me this afternoon, within a couple weeks or less. But they've been cammering a lot, as much as they could, they found a lot of problems, moved a lot of roots, found some areas they're gonna have to replace. Certainly have improved some areas where they've been able to repair as they go, that we've been paying attention to the way things are bonding now in those areas versus the way they were. So there's no question that what we're doing was necessary, and the past being necessary, actually, so. Uh, street, Dwayne's not here, uh, there are gonna be getting ready, and if they haven't already started putting the road in, which is just basically gonna be the base for a good while, out around the water tower, or out to the water tower, behind the Machado truck stop area, uh, we do anticipate in August them starting McDonald Drive, and that's supposed to be done by November 1st, along with the access into Walmart. We met with Adam Parkhouse of NDOT, Dwayne and I did, drove around town, lots of matters to discuss, and some traffic concerns we have long-term, given the fact we've got this amount of housing coming in. So they're aware, and they're thinking, um, kind of in line with what we think might be needed to alleviate some congestion, so, about all I have on that. We had a pre-construction meeting today with the water department on all the product, well, on the tower project and the water project, which entails all the hydrants and Manito height replacement, um, the connection out on 14, the connection bypassing country meadows, so we have a straight line shot across 31 and the 31 industrial park extension. All those are due to start October timeframe, and then about right best, might, both of those projects, maybe around October, and to be completed by late next year. Tower is supposed to be up and painted, um, the high school logo and everything on it, saying Home of the Zebras, by September of '27 is what he says, that's when they're planning on painting, and we're excited about the way that's gonna look, so. All right, um, reported committees, I'm gonna start with the county, county, you wanna give us a report you're getting to share?
Not really, I'd be careful to listen. I like your bear shirt, though.
I'm gonna change that, I'm not embarrassed, man.
Unless you guys got any questions for me?
What are you doing here?
Who?
It's your anniversary, I told on you.
Oh.
My gosh, didn't need the romantic.
I'm gonna take all of them. This is true public service, right?
I took her to supper, it's great, come on.
Happy anniversary.
Well, congratulations, how many years?
30.
You're the scorer, big one.
Wow!
It's gonna be a real nice dinner.
36.
This is all on public record, Rick.
Go with that in minutes. He's being livestreamed in minutes. So now everyone's gonna tell you happy anniversary.
Okay, moving on quickly, RDP, you're familiar, you wanna share anything about the weekend?
Sure, thank you for the stimulus, that will make a difference, we approved, or working on a window reimbursement right now for a downtown owner, the little things add up and keep them going, so thank you. Spirit Lake Music Jamboree, it was Dora kickoff, um, final numbers aren't quite in, we almost had 1,000 people through. It was a terrific day, we had enough rain, I think, to get Lakers in town, so it was kind of terrific. Road closed, Dora cups in play, I don't know of any incident to report, uh, they ran out of cups a couple times, went down head-up route for some, um, and she was running out, and it was kind of a great thing to see all our work in action. So, great day of music, wonderful to see food trucks on main streets, the street department was so wonderful, bringing picnic tables down, um, we had food truck canceled because of the weather, but we all made the best of it and used what we had and had a terrific day, so.
So any way to get a count on how many out-of-towners came in?
Um, I, we do on credit card reports and stuff like that. We run about 58% of the theater from out of town, which is wonderful. United States Blues Band, the last band that played has a regional draw, there was a ton of people from Kokomo, I don't know if you caught on to that?
They, they, the thing about this event was, a band would play, and then the stage would free up, you know, the band had to take all their stuff out, and then the other band would come in and set up, well, during that time, that would make people go out, that people want to go outside and want to walk around. So, we would get a bunch of people, and then they'd leave, and, and actually, the Rochester people would like stay at the establishment, the regulars and stuff like that, but people were coming and going all night, I think I cooked until 12:30.
It was a busy, busy day, and it was kind of.
It was my best day at the bar, in sense, and it wasn't that big, it was a normal breakfast, a slow lunch, slow lunch, but it was, it was all dinner. Really wanted some people to eat more steaks and stuff like that, that slowed the cooking down, how many hamburgers was very fast-paced for four hours.
Well, Alyssa said that people, well, Jared said this too, but people who had not originally tried to make new brews.
Right, they have a mini ear tent, and.
Yeah, they have the, the ability to find new clients that were interested in.
They were there till 11:30.
Yeah.
They can get, it was just, it was a long terrific day. So, thank you for the support on that. August is all about, um, our main street program, we'll enter the aspiring Imes program with Okra, uh, and Nickel Plate. August 23rd, it's on, um, and you'll see lots of press releases on that, we've got all the bands, the food trucks, Ed's getting everyone for the parade, touch a truck.
You're all planned for a second in the parade already, it's over.
Yeah, I heard.
Eddie's got an idea.
But, um, everyone's going, you'll see tons of advertising going up, I hope you saw, Seventh and Main, our big street decal with all the downtown events or the main ones, on the Cook Brother Building or whatever it is in your memory.
And he keeps saying, uh, he keeps sending an email saying you need to get your, um, the Fort County Hopes application in, because he's got 40 that are ahead of us, if we want to have a chance to be in the mix, so.
Yeah, the parade's big, 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 and we've got tons of artists coming, so I'm, we're really excited. So if you get on Facebook and you see us talking about Nickel Plate, share it, um, and we're working on some other great ideas soon, developing.
Great job.
Okay?
Amy, how are your plans?
Uh, Eric's plan, our meeting for July got canceled, um, but we are meeting in August. We have, um, to, uh, be with Heather, just to discuss the nearly annual review, and then we've got five or six things that we're in the mix with, that we're looking at battery storage, uh, carbon capture, so lots of things to review, just, um, new energy activities that we are trying to make sure that we understand and that we have some sort of decision-making on to be prepared. We've got lots of big work that we have to read, all of us, before the big meeting, right, Rick?
Too much.
Too much, so, but it's important stuff, so, yeah. And then annual adoption, something very tough, I'll say again.
Michael, that's you?
Uh, about a week and a half ago, we received notification from the state, um, two and a half million dollars pre-committed to the industrial park, um, its formalities now jumps with a few small loops, they're trying to get all the money out, um, as fast as they can for various projects, so the two and a half million, I can tell you is, is a guarantee, we will get it, it's a question of just when. In addition to that, there's between 20 and 30 Ready One projects, all downstate, that have not even been started, and we really don't know how much money all that amounts to, um, but the state is talking about, uh, pulling all those projects, pulling all that money, and asking for new projects that would like to stay within the districts where they are, so that everybody across the state gets something. But if that doesn't happen, they're also talking about turning loose, however much money that is coming up to the program, the districts that are successful, we're number one in getting our money out the door, by the way, um, and making that money available for other projects. So I'm in the process of looking for new projects that we could possibly go after at that point, and that's where we're at.
You mentioned the two and a half million ready, too, for the sewer extension part. Uh, I am working with Rudy Goffman's office and Commonwealth, kind of brought us together. I have a meeting in a couple weeks with Rudy himself for breakfast to discuss it, he's, they see this as a regional effect project, um, and there might be some federal funds to help, but we know how slow federal funds are, but we'll take anything we can get to help us with that industrial park development, so. Okay, Park Board, Bob?
I did not attend, and I don't see Kim here, I have no report.
I did get the, well, they're setting records at the pool, I don't know the numbers, but they're setting records at the pool, whether it's been in your favor.
Yeah, the summer park program is done, really big success.
And I did a great job with the Arbor Day confirmation.
I read it.
I heard you did a great job.
I read it. Okay, um, Mark's not here, uh, we didn't have a solid waste meeting last month, did we? Sidewalk Tree Board, do you have any report on that, Brian?
I do, I bet, you're here. The mayor reported that, uh, due to the short timeframe, the sidewalk work had already started and nearing completion, so that was, maybe a good thing to hear. Several aspects of the Sidewalk Share Program discussed, maybe the churches had applied for monies, um, so they're working on that with those matching funds, but they're working on getting things done, and getting more sidewalks into the, to the city, or repaired to the city. That was what I had for sidewalks, Tree Ward, uh, Arbor Day events, the presentation of summer park program went very well, the children seemed to enjoy it, there's going to be a, they're applying to have a booth at the Nickel Plate Festival, I know in the past they've done things like that, mixed results, but it helps later. Used to have the Tree City Program, you had to make the effort to do things to educate the public, and it's hard, from here to here, it's hard to do things, and see if things someone will come and learn something. They're looking at several trees to looking at, also calls from the public, but this or that tree need to be taken care of, and they're looking at all of those. And I guess as far as councils, that's all that really happened to need to report back.
I kind of gave you the water update, one other thing, you're in the process of putting the much-needed building out of the plant, um, maybe out of the dirt work, I think they're just waiting for the sticks to go in the ground. That's all I, I've already talked about, the projects going, um, do you have anything you want to share, sir?
Me?
Yeah.
Sure, the Support Cafe, I'll talk about Spark Suicide, Prevention, Reaction Awareness, Care, um, we have begun the process of investigating, starting a loss program, I just talked to Andy about this just a couple minutes ago, but today was my first meeting. Loss is a civilian volunteer training and certification program where we could get people who could respond to scenes with law enforcement at their request, while they're working on the emergency part where there's guns and violence and threats potential, we could be a volunteer patrol, helping the citizens, also doing an almost immediate follow-up. So, uh, early in the process, but that's, I believe this, that it's in 37 counties now in Indiana, so we've got some people we can call and talk to about it. Also, we have launched a couple new support services at the cafe, one is for military veterans, and it's gonna be, uh, I'm not gonna lead it, because I'm not part of that experience, but, uh, we're trying to encourage military veterans to come in and attend, but they don't need all their people who do, that they can pair up with. So, any veterans that you know of, or any people you need, you know who may need services, please encourage them to check out our schedule and, and come visit.
Thanks, Pat. Mr. Martens, do you have anything you want to share from the school board?
Uh, I'm actually here in support of the animal shelter.
Okay, you wear two hats.
I, I do, I do.
We have been, I've had a couple meetings with Jan and Vance in the last two to three weeks, we've had some exciting stuff, I think, going forward, they're wanting to have a couple, one thing, she mentioned, was have a community service day in the fall, and then again in the spring, with the students shut, basically shut down the school for the day and from K through 12, uh, and she encourages the park department to go up some projects, but obviously different levels of service, based on their age, but a great opportunity for the young people to get their hands dirty and invested in the community, also talking about, um, different ways of being involved, us being involved with them and then being involved with us, so, um, we had a good meeting with her at the Park Board the other night with some ideas, it's being strongly considered, um, so, uh, we've got some really good things happening there. Only other, is there any other, other reports from anyone?
Did I give everybody the Beeman Home schedule for, um, from July?
I don't think so.
I did not, okay, I was just looking at that.
Only other announcement I have, the, August 9th, I'm having a mayor's golf outing, and I've made the first part, having the invitation of other mayors and other municipal advisors, and the second part in the afternoon flight, um, more for the, the community, but right now, I'm just trying to fill some gaps on both ends, so if you have a group that wants to play on, it's a Saturday, uh, the shotgun in the morning's at 8, we'll have Joe, sorry, Joe's Hope is gonna be serving the hot dog, and to make some money for themselves, uh, in between the two flights, at 2 o'clock in the afternoon, the, the other flight will take off shotgun, so, um, and I'm raising, all the profits will go to Lighted Pathway, who does a wonderful job of helping provide food, clothing, and shelter to those in need in our community, so, if you're interested, um, or if you know somebody that's interested, let me, have them get, call in or email me or something, and we'll set it up, it's 2:40 a team, uh, if a business wants to sponsor a whole hundred bucks, um, it's pretty straightforward, we're not doing the mulligan thing, we're not doing this and that, we've got some other things, we'll have fun things on the course if they want to pay to do on a whole basis, but, um, we're just trying to raise some money for a good cause, so, uh, keep that in mind if you can, if you're interested, so. ADA concerns, legal matters? Any other public comments? Any motion to adjourn?
Second.
Move to second by Brian and Brian, all in favor say aye.
Aye.